All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order and we'll start with roll call.
Thank you. Chair Fryman Hunt.
Here.
Vice Chair Spears.
Present.
Commissioners Buckles.
Here.
Desai, he is absent. Hinton. Hut.
Here.
Peznar.
Here.
I'd like to move on to approval of the agenda. I'd like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion. Will you approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And next, approval of the minutes of September first, twenty sixteen. Do you have enough people who were here who were at that meeting to approve the minutes? I was not at that meeting, so.
Let's see.
What is the rule on that?
The, the rule is that it's really an administrative action, so there's a couple of ways that someone who wasn't attending it can still vote on it. If they watched the, watched it on video, that's like you were there, but even if you didn't do that, you can still vote just, just to get them approved.
Okay. So the people who were present, who were present there in a, Commissioners Buckles, Desai, Hinton, Hut, and Peznar were present at that meeting.
Yeah, I have no corrections. They look fine to me.
Any corrections who was there? Does it look all right? I'd like to plan. All right.
Well, I'll move approval of the minutes of September first.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And then we will move on to audience comments, of which there are none. I think we will pass that. There'd be nobody in the audience. And move on to discussion regarding regulation of group living facilities.
Hmm, interesting.
We're having a staff report to start with.
Yes. Thank you. At the meeting of April twenty first and September first, the Planning Commission initiated a discussion regarding the regulation of group living facilities in compliance with land use implementation, measure four of the general plan update. This measure, as you recall, implements land use policy L two point three of the general plan to establish zoning provisions for both unlicensed and licensed group living facilities, including floor area limit, height limits, setbacks, location of residential uses in commercial areas, and design guidelines. The proposed amendments are not aimed to regulate licensed group living facilities with six or fewer persons, as they would not, as they would be exempt from local regulation by state law. Licensed group facilities serving six or fewer residents must be treated like single-family homes with the same parking requirements, setbacks, design standards, height limits, et cetera. The commission will consider the regulation of unlicensed group living facilities and licensed group living facilities with greater than six persons. The purpose of the zoning code amendments is to update definitions related to group living facilities in the zoning code and to establish conditional use permit and operational requirements for unlicensed group living facilities and licensed group living facilities with greater than six persons. This would afford the city the ability to better regulate such facilities by imposing operational and distance requirements to preserve the residential character of neighborhoods. At the September first meeting, as you recall, the commission directed staff to return with your agreed-upon revisions for further discussion. Staff seeks the commission's review and direction regarding the proposed amendments, which include new and updated definitions to chapter seventeen point zero eight, updates to the conditionally permitted uses in chapter seventeen sixty, and a new ordinance regulating group living facilities with greater than six persons as a conditionally permitted use in the commercial and residential professional uses. This concludes my report. Let me know if you have any questions.
Do you have any idea of how many facilities there are in this town that would fall underneath this?
In the.
Currently.
In the unlicensed, no.
Okay.
What about the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
What about the seven or more?
The seven or more. Those would be the unlicensed, actually. So, no.
Okay.
We don't.
So, we could have one, or we could have?
Well, we could name a number of them.
Yeah, we could, yeah. We know of some.
And a number of them aren't in the zones we're even talking about. Because the other thing to remember is the, the, these are the conditionally permitted uses that are defined here, but in the particular zoning codes, there's things that say some of these uses are allowed, especially like institutional. So, these aren't the only places that these types of uses could potentially be that, that we're listing.
Well, if they're unlicensed, we probably don't know where they are.
Right.
And that's, you know, potentially an issue.
But we do have two different specific plan, or three specific plans for retirement or assisted living facilities, so we know there's three of those. And I think there's even a few more that, so, and there's a lot of nursery schools and other kind of things that are regulated by this. So, it's not, it's not none.
And you know about licensed because they come through you.
Not, not always. If they have a state license, and have the ability as a matter of right to locate in a residential neighborhood, which many of them do, as long as they, is six beds or less, then we wouldn't necessarily know about them. But the, but we can find out by simply going to the website for the various types of licensing facilities and, you know, looking up the address to see if they're, or looking up Saramandre and see how many licensed facilities are, are there and where they are at.
But for the unlicensed ones?
Those just go underground.
They're just, they're just there.
They're just there, yeah. And they may, they may be violating your zoning code, or they may not be. And you don't know because they're, they're not licensed, there, no one's regulating them, and they didn't come to the city to ask for any zoning permission for that use.
So, when we go to implement a radius restriction, we may or may not know about those other uses.
That's, that's possible, yes. The radius restriction also applies to certain kinds of community care facilities, specifically the small family daycares and the large family daycares in, in particular. But there are also, there are other kinds of community care facilities, and there's a three hundred foot radius if you care, if the local agency cares to adopt it. And then we can know because they're all licensed. And so, if someone wants to come in, they're going to the state first to pull their license, but they have to be able to show that they're in compliance.
Do they need a business license within the city?
You know, I think that for a lot of those, they don't require that.
Definitely not for the ones that by right can establish without CUP requirements, for example. Those, we cannot even require a business license.
But one of the.
They're treated as residential uses, in other words.
Right, yeah.
One of the issues with the radius and the unlicensed is you could have an applicant who spends a lot of money and a lot of time preparing their application. They do all the appropriate searches that they can, and they come in and they have a very good application, they're meeting all the rules, and then somebody could say, oh, right down the street, there's an unlicensed one already, and it's within three hundred feet. And that's, I mean, the sort of, there's that gotcha element of it that's, that's really problematic with the whole unlicensed thing.
Is there some way to get around that?
Well, it, it is, I mean, it is the applicant's responsibility, if that is a requirement, that they have to show, they have to do their research to show whether there is or there isn't. So, if something comes up at last minute, it is obvious that the applicant didn't vet that entirely. So, it's really on them for not, you know.
Yeah, if somebody else could find out, the applicant should have been able to.
Knocking on all the doors to say, are you operating? I mean, how, I mean, it's possible some of us are operating under the radar. They're not on the internet, they're not listed anywhere. They're just taking people into their home. How would you know?
And, and your office isn't aware of them, so you can't say.
Yeah, I, I mean.
You know, when you do, when you do environmental studies, there's, there's companies you can go to and they tell you where all the different things are, and you do radius searches, and there's databases for that kind of thing, but it's sort of hard to have a database of unlicensed people flying under the radar.
And I, I think that's part of the problem.
People living in a house and you don't even know.
Yeah, because they present themselves as a resident. I mean, when you go by, it looks like a residential, of, just a, a home. And, you know, you assume that the, the Osmonds are inside, and it might be the Oswalds or something. I don't know.
But, but, but on the third hand, if they're there and no one knows, and it's just a family, it's hardly a problem. Right?
And, and that's, and that's part of the reasons why, and that's, I think that's one of the reasons why the state passed it, because that, that they can exist, you know, as a.
Right, but.
As a home.
Well, what, I guess, one of the issues I, I have is with the way we're contemplating doing the radius restriction, that it's a black and white rule, that you could have, if, if it's an issue that nobody really cares about, and then, but for somehow you figure out about it, then, then you've prevented the use which you otherwise would have allowed. And so, I, when, when we get to that point, we'll talk about that.
If we don't have other, you know, if we don't have other sort of general comments about it, I guess the thing should just kind of go through the stuff we have. But I would like to start off with a bit of an introduction, so my point of view to this discussion.
But are, are we, we're generally gonna deal with exhibit E, right? Because that's the part where we left off.
Yes.
Before we go to exhibit E, if I could just make one quick clarification on, on exhibit D, when we were talking about the uses.
Yes.
I, I just wanna make sure, that we talked about a lot of this stuff, and I wanna make sure it doesn't fall through the cracks. On, in F, where we're talking about the conditional uses in RP and the C-zone, we talked about on the C-zone that these are only allowed in the part of the C-zone that residential uses would be allowed. So, if you remember, in, in our C-zone, we, we say residential uses are allowed generally above and behind the commercial storefronts. And so, these are uses that, that could go in to the residential, where residential uses are allowed in a C-zone, but they couldn't supplant storefronts. And I think we need to be, I, I just wanna make really clear about that. And then the other thing is, just, this is a really point of clarification, we allow childcare centers, which are the same thing as nursery schools, but I'd like to just put slash nursery school, because I think most people in the vernacular think of them as nursery schools.
Nursery schools would be more of an institutional use, and childcare center is a business. So, that's, that's.
Well, they're the same thing under, under our, under code.
Oh, it does say it's the same there.
Nursery school is the same as childcare center.
Oh.
So, I just, I, I think that most people think of those, call them nursery schools. And so, I would like to say childcare center slash nursery school.
I was thinking about that in the commercial zone, too. This issue of above and behind for, for residential uses.
Right, and we talked about it in the prior meetings, and I just, I just wanna make sure it doesn't fall through the cracks, because we talked about a lot of stuff.
The, the above part may be a fire code issue, because we normally cannot, in schools, we cannot put kindergarteners on second floors, because they do not have the ability to direct themselves out of the path of danger.
Right, but, but other uses, like a, an assisted living facility.
Others in assisted living, yeah, that's no problem.
But if it's an assisted living facility, I, I, I mean, I'm thinking about my, my parents both lived in assisted living facilities in their lives. And there were issues with people who were extremely disabled having to be on the first floor in case of needing to get out of there faster. So, it could be an issue, actually. That would have to be considered if someone were gonna do it above and behind.
Right, and that's what we'd consider when we do the CUP. But I, I just wanna make it clear, we're not supplanting storefronts with these uses.
Do we have language about that, or?
Mm-hmm, yes. It should be specified.
I think we just need to say in F, commercial uses RP, and, and C, commercial zone, but only in the portion of C-zone where residential uses are allowed.
Any other comments on this, which was exhibit E?
E, isn't Edward?
I would like to start with this, because I, I found the introduction to this incredibly negative, and to me, kind of essentially unacceptable to call the fact that we may have people with special needs living in here just a problem. And I think that, you know, we have family friends, and I have an uncle who was developmentally disabled, who lived with a family his whole life. And he was a happy person, and he never caused anyone any harm. And he needed a place to live. And I think to just look at this from the point of view that it's a problem is completely lacking in compassion and reality that we have all kinds of people with all kinds of needs who would maybe make some people uncomfortable, so they wouldn't want to see them, but wouldn't really be a detriment to the community. And I think that to sort of start off with only addressing this as a problem rather than an opportunity to, you know, allow housing for some people who need a place to live, is not the way I would like to start the introduction to this section.
Yeah, I don't disagree. I think, I think originally, the focus might have been, but this has gone through so many iterations, that group, unlicensed group living facilities are technically a boarding house, and. And boarding houses are not, um, illegal use anywhere, in, in any zoning district. But, so we're creating an exception for group living facilities as a reasonable accommodation to ex- do exactly what we're talking about, which is, um, accommodate and, um, help people that may have special needs. Because the definition of the group living facilities really, it, uh, but for, uh, the, um, the residents having some kind of disability would by any other, uh, name be a boarding house and thereby, uh, not permitted in any zone. So, I mean, we can rework the, um, purpose, I, yeah.
A little bit more positive. I mean, there certainly can be issues, of variety of issues, but also, people need a place to live. And I've been learning a lot about this from my daughter, who's now working at the Housing Rights Center in, in Los Angeles. And, you know, she deals with people all the time who just need a place to live. And they need a reasonable accommodation for disability.
Yes, yeah. And, and that, that was the approach we wanted to take originally, was to, we start with, with acknowledgement that boarding houses have always been, um, uh, unlawful in Sierra Madre in all zones. We, that's never changed, and we're not changing it now. But what we do need to do is provide for, um, group living facilities for, um, the disabled that, uh, fall outside of some licensing structures. And why do we care? Well, we care because nobody's watching them. Um, we, uh, the, number one, we want to be able to provide someplace where they can be located, because that's a reasonable accommodation. But secondly, if they're not licensed, and you're talking about a very, potentially very vulnerable population, and there's no state licensing facility, there's no supervision, no governance, and so that's why, that's the real reason behind why there should be a conditional use permit, so that the city can know that there's a proper, um, management in place and proper accommodations for our, um, disabled and vulnerable population. That's the real reason for this. And I agree, it's not captured.
Have the introduction to address that, rather than just address it as a problem.
I will revise that.
Would it be, would it, oh, sorry, Jane, would it be appropriate to mention, say, to, to address community issues that differentiate, um, problems, not problems, but differentiate, uh?
Concerns.
Yeah, concerns regarding boarding, but include the, I mean, I just wanna make sure if we add something, we're not, can you add the aspect of, and say boarding houses without creating a definitional problem, and to differentiate it from?
Yeah, that was kind of the approach I would rather take, because I'm not trying, we're not trying to suggest that a group living facility for the disabled is a problem, or that we're trying to, you know, find a little place to hide them.
That's where it starts, though.
Yeah, I completely hear you. It's actually the opposite. We're acknowledging that but for the fact that, um, these provide valuable services for, uh, disabled, uh, people. Um, they wouldn't be allowed because they technically are boarding houses.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I think, yeah. So, that's, that's my, my major issue from the start of this, so. Where'd this document go? Okay, so, does anyone have other comments on this, this first page here?
Yeah, I, I have a few, and some, some of them which are just sort of typo cleanup type. The first is that, uh, we don't typically, in our, we, we usually have the, the, the numbers of our sections just naked. We don't say chapter or section, so, so where it says seventeen ninety-four oh one oh, it should just say seventeen ninety-four oh one oh purpose. It shouldn't say chapter, and, uh, and that should go for all of them. And then seventeen ninety-four oh two of the definition, we don't need this section, because this group living facility's definition is in the general definitions up above, and it's exactly the same. And then in applicability, I, I have a question, this is a little bit more substantive. Uh, whether we want to apply this just in the RP and the C-zone, um, or, because we, it, it may be that some of these uses find their way into institutional zones, and wouldn't we want these findings to be met there as well? So I, I would think we would say, um, in- instead of saying allowed to locate, where, where it says allowed to locate in the RP or the C-zone, just say the provision of this chapter shall apply to all unlicensed group living facilities and licensed group living facilities serving more than six residents, which, which require a conditional use permit.
So we're not specific to any zone?
And to all persons who own, manage, or operate such uses. Yeah, because, I, I don't-
It could be somewhere else, and it sort of covers any other eventuality.
Maybe we change the rules later, I, I just don't see that it helps us to be narrow on this.
It adds specificity, which is not helpful.
And then in, um, in seventeen ninety-four oh four oh, A and B, we again mention the zones, which we could just take out. Because we've already said which ones it's appli- applicable to.
All right. Any other comments here?
In seventeen ninety-four oh five oh B, um, the list of people who are gonna do background checks on me s- on, it seems a little overkill, especially, a lot of these people aren't gonna be known if it's a new facility. So I mean, you wanna get the, the managers, but, you know, like, the, the gardener, they're not gonna know who that is. And so, I, I don't, I don't, maybe we, instead of saying employee or, or other person, we, we say key employee. I don't know, does anyone else have ideas on that?
I was, I mean, it seems like definitely whoever's the owner.
Right.
Anyone who's interacting directly with the people who are living there, right? But I mean, do we want, do we want every single person who works there to have to have this kind of background?
Well, I guess one of the other questions is, this is, when they're gonna start the facility and, and get a conditional use permit, we want to do this background check on the, the key people. The people who they know, but, but once we, they get that CUP, we don't have any ongoing requirement. Um, and, and so, you know, i- so I guess there's two questions. One is, how many of the people are you gonna expect them to know who they are before they even open it?
Right.
And then the second one is, for the people who you don't, um, are, is there gonna be some requirement that they do those background checks and show the city?
Can we do that?
Well, I think you can, yeah. I mean, it's a business, and, um, it's a business use of property. And I think you can, uh, require a background check. Um, again, the, um, the reason is to ensure, because they're not licensed by the state, and there's no oversight anywhere, that, um, a vulnerable population is not being victimized in some way.
And how would that work?
It, it's, it's going to, um, it, it, they will have to, um, submit an application to the police department for, um, the, you know, the background check, and they'll have to pay for it.
Would these people be required to have a business license?
Uh, they, they should, yeah. The operator of a facility like this. This is really no different than, um, a community care facility applicant for a license has to go through exactly the same background check.
I, I agree that the management team should be held to a standard that assures that the people are gonna do business with them, are going to be dealt with honestly and fairly. I am aware that in many programs, they use recovered addicts and such things as counselors. And I, I, I'm a little reticent to say that they too must be held to the same standards as the, the people who are doing it for a business. Does that make sense?
It, it does, yeah. No, we can change it.
So, so the, that when you put in the term employee, it may be counterproductive to the mission, you know. Now, and, and, you know, allegedly, we all live in a country where people pay their debt to society, and they all move on, and they're forgiven, and they get a second chance, so hopefully they, you know, we will be no different.
Yeah, I, I think the key is it, it needs to be the, the people in management. And, and those are gonna be the people who you know ahead of time, anyhow.
Yeah.
So, uh, uh, you know, I don't know if we just wanna strike the word employee, or, or say key employee.
Or management employee, as opposed to
Contact.
The counseling employees.
Well, we all already have the word manager.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, we might, maybe we don't even need the word employee at all.
Operator, owner, operator, um, manager, or other person in charge.
Partner, I'm not sure we need partner, because if, the other thing is, if somebody's a financial backer of this and has no control of it, you know, they're providing money, but they don't have control, then, then I don't want to discourage that money from coming.
Issue is the people who are in direct contact with the, the people who are living there, right? That the employees or partners or owners who are in direct contact with the residents is, is what I'm worried about.
Well, the operator should be, the owner might not be. The owner may never even visit, but.
Yeah, but I think if-
But you still-
If, if the owner is someone who has a crime of moral perpetuity, and these people are, probably are gonna have some sort of government benefits, you know, there's the issue of them sort of, yeah, I don't want anybody like that owning it. So I think owner makes sense. Owner, operator, officer, manager, or other person in charge of the group living, because I think it's probably enough.
I, I would consider employee, though. Anybody, anybody that's gonna be helping the, the people within the facility.
Well, but then, th- there are, there are people who have used their experience as in, as negative experience, to become counselors. And a lot of my, a lot of things that I know to be true is that tho- they somehow have a better understanding of the people that are, that are being treated than you or, you or I might.
Yeah, yeah, I hear what you're saying.
Therefore, y- you know, by, we could eliminate the entire possibility of, of reformed addicts helping addicts, or whatever it's gonna be, you know.
Yeah, it's a tough one. But, you know, I've heard the stories of, uh, people in, uh, care facilities, and people steal their jewelry. Steal things off their body, you know.
Yeah, and it's-
Happens all the time.
Yes, it does.
That may not totally fall under the purview of the city, of this department, city department to manage it, may become a more, with a police.
But tha- that's why I say employee might be a good term to leave in there, that's all I'm saying.
Well, well, there's, I, I, but I think we have two questions. One is, who, who do we really want to have background checks on? And, and we wanna make sure they don't have this. And the other is, who do we want to be known at the time that they're even proposing the project?
Right.
Because if, if we're saying, we want to know every single employee that you're gonna have before you even start the program, we're gonna make it so that you can't possibly comply.
And also, because people are gonna go through the process of, of, of the application process before they hire people, because, if they're gonna hire people, because you're not gonna hire people until you're sure you are able to open up the place. So that, you may have the owner, partner, you know, just the smallest number of people.
Sure.
Just the owner may be applying for it.
It's, it's, it is, it is admittedly would be burdensome. It doesn't make it illegal, illegal, and, uh, there are, uh, several land uses that actually have that level of burden on them. However, I'm not su- this is totally a policy call. And, uh, no one's suggesting, I think the, um, planning director tried to throw this together as a, a jumping off part for discussion purposes.
Barbara, do you have a comment about this?
Yeah, if I can just interject, because I've, this is so ingrained with me, because I work in the field with dual diagnosed and, um, mentally challenged, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and, uh, kids that have been out of lockup back and forth. Uh, because of HIPAA, you can't ask for any of the information or background checks on these so-called sober living halfway houses, if this is what you're discussing. I walked in late, and it's strictly through the key operator or owner, operator. Any information would have to, if at all required, would have to go through the police department. And the police department would have to get it from the caseworkers dealing with the files. And because they're funded through government agencies, it's a, you know, it's just a kind of a mishmash of good luck.
It would apply to healthcare, because that's what HIPAA's about, but it wouldn't necessarily apply to-
Because of their background with the type of facilities that, um, if you're talking about the sober living, then it's since it falls under the Disability Act, yeah. You can't require anything except, the, the state kind of stuck all cities with this, and just plopped it down in, in bad zoning areas, and walked away saying, or, you know, we throw our hands up, but we're going to financially back these places. Unless the police are called out, they have no reason to go on, uh, to check anything, um, on the facility grounds. So most, and I, I'm not, I'm not saying that I agree with any of this, um, because most of these places are located outside the city limits, except for the state now stepping in.
Okay, so, so we're also, this applies to not just sober living, but other kinds of facilities, just not that you didn't hear about, because you weren't in the room when we were talking about it.
You have to go through their caseworker or social worker for any type of background, for facility ownership.
Background on the people.
No, no, it's not about the people who live there.
We're not looking for that.
This is not a HIPAA issue, this is a manager, this is a business issue.
It's about the people running the place.
To the extent state or federal law is preempting this stuff, it's gonna preempt it, and it doesn't matter what we say.
Yeah.
So, what we're, what we're trying to do is we're trying to provide regulation for places where we can regulate. And so I think what we need to do is from a policy perspective, say, if there are these kind of uses that, that falls within our purview to regulate, what level of scrutiny do we want? And, and so, you know, and if it's, if HIPAA doesn't allow us, well, there's not much we can do about that, so let's not worry about that. Uh, let's worry about what we can, and to me, I think, I think we've gone a little overboard on this, and I'd like to, uh, drag it back a bit.
Pull it back a little bit.
But not a whole bunch, because I still, I definitely wanna make sure that the people who are operating it and owning it are not crooks.
I, I have a question with C. The fire chief and building officials shall ascertain whether the premise to be used complies with applicable laws, ordinances, and regulations concerning. I'm, I'm usually not in favor of adding to the burden of city employees. Matter of fact, my mantra's been, you know, that whatever it is should be pushed back onto the applicant. But, you know, I mean, in today's times, there was an article about four people that died in a fire, um, for the disabled. And our, our safety codes look after people who are the most dependent. People in hospitals, children, and things like that. And if we're gonna have these people move into Sierra Madre, the concept of having them provide an emergency plan, I think is, i- i- it should be specified. And quite honestly, I think there should be some kind of annual inspection. We inspect, we inspect schools, we inspect hospitals, we inspect, you know, nursing homes.
And daycares are inspected?
We, 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 we need to put that on, that burden back on the safety people, so that we know that if they're in the, you know, they're being housed in, in this city, that there is at least some kind of oversight into safety.
Any other comments on that? I, I think that's a good idea, because they are vulnerable, it's a vulnerable, these are vulnerable populations.
Right, exactly. So both an emergency plan, because in the event that there's another rupture on the Sierra Madre fault, we could be looking at an unknown number of people with, uh, pretty severe needs that are somehow, you know, thrust upon us. And so we can't plan for, respond to things that we don't know, so we'd like to know that. And then also to make sure that however they're being housed is at least inspected and known to be safe at some point in time. Because, you know, when something, something like this happens, the first thing that's gonna happen is, there, people are gonna say, well, when was the last time this was inspected, and what was on the inspection?
I, I, I think, just, I, I, I agree with you entirely on that. And talking about this and the issue of the background, the ongoing background checks, what I, how, how we draft the actual law here and how we structure this, it seems to me that we need a new section that's gonna have ongoing obligations and regulations, because all this stuff talks about how we approve a CUP. And so we, we're gonna need another section that talks about, um- and so, w- we're gonna need another section that talks about, um, y- y- you know, the requirement for a business license and annual inspections or updates, or, basically, the kind of things that a state licensure agency would do, that the city would then take on, and then our ability to charge for it.
Right.
Um, and so, we're gonna need to craft that section, and all these thoughts that we're taking.
Right.
We can't just cram them into the application procedure section, cause they're gonna get lost, we, we need to have a separate section of ongoing obligations, and then put those things.
And would that be something, part of the zoning code, or is there some other part of the code where that would be more rational to put?
It would be in this code.
It would be in this code, okay.
I wondered to know that, how, where, where it would show up.
Where that would live, because we're sort of talking about regulating the operation of it, rather than, you know, the sort of permitting of it, so, just wanna make sure it's in the right place.
But it is, it is a specific land use, and if, assuming that we are going to require, um, background checks on, uh, the operator or the owner, um, one question is, if it changes hands, or if you get a new operator or a new manager, are you, do we want to require a background check for that? And, uh, and then, um, would there be, um, I, I really don't wanna get into, uh, a city licensing procedure, definitely, that, that's.
Right. But there could be these basic things, a background check, a, a, a business license.
Correct.
And, uh, hell, uh, this, this annual inspection and a, um, emergency plan.
Right, and failure to comply with one or more of those could end up, you know, getting your business license, uh, and/or your conditional use permit revoked.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
You know, for section C there, the fire chief and building officials shall ascertain whether or not the premises to be used comply with laws and ordinances. As a building official, I'd say, how far am I supposed to take that?
Well.
Uh, am I supposed to be looking for EVA compliance, and if there's gonna be wheelchair accessibility?
Well, i- if this is a facility that serves people who are in.
Wheelchair?
In, in, that are in the AFN community, then the, the question would probably be very relevant. Well, if, if you're gonna just serve the disabled, how are they supposed to get in the door, you know, I mean, you know, so.
To build a wheelchair accessibility onto, say, a house, you know, they're always on raised foundations, well, not always, but.
Yeah, but, I mean.
Rampage, or, or whatever it is, but, I, I mean, a- and it may need, they may need to do that anyway, because if they're gonna serve that population, it'll be very challenging to do so without.
But, but again, we, we have a chicken and egg issue, because this is a conditional use permit application, right?
Right.
So, you might not even have a building, or you might have a building that requires significant renovation, and, you know, building permit and code compliance stuff is usually done way down the line, and, and we're, we're just talking about the use, so.
Mm-hmm.
I, you know, I, I guess, we wanna make sure that, that whatever they're doing is safe, but we, we can't, in order, in order for them to apply for a CUP, we can't expect them to be completed with all their construction documents.
But, I mean, we could require them to have a plan, so that the building will, you know how we had that discussion about the landscape, seeing the landscape plans, it's like, to have a, that they should maybe require to have a plan to say, this is what we plan on doing to make this place accessible, safe, and, you know, suitable for the use that we intend to use it.
Can they?
Not that it has to be done, but that we can see that they're going to consider the needs, the special needs of the people they're serving.
Is it, um, i- is it germane that is in the process of the application, they sign a statement that says they understand that their facility will need to comply? So, it's a, so it's like, i- it is a, it is a forewarning that, you know, this is part of the process?
Right, we could say prior to occupancy, these inspections will, must occur.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be cool.
Because that's, it, it, it's an issue of health and safety for the people.
Yeah, cause I agree, you, you know.
Or, you know, the, cause some of the, some of these are for, uh, disabled people, but some of these could be for children or other people who may not have the same sort of physical disabilities, but, you know.
I think almost any, uh, group facility that involves minors is going to be required to be licensed.
Licensed, yeah.
I, I don't think there's an exception of that, fortunately.
All right.
So, there is some regulatory oversight.
Nothing comes to mind.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, I mean, there could be, yeah, I mean, I just think that it is, it's, it's a, it's a reasonable concern to have, that these people should be in a safe environment.
Yeah, I agree, I mean, the, the, the kinds of unlicensed, um, group, um, living facilities, uh, obviously include, um, sober living facilities and drug and alcohol recor- recovery homes where there's no actual treatment, but they also might include a, a group home or group living, um, facility for mentally disabled.
Right.
Or, um, physically disabled, and, uh, that, that do not require a license.
Added wives.
Yeah.
Facilities don't require a license, as a matter of fact, they wanna be kept.
Women, yeah, shelters, yeah. Any other comments on this, on this, this page here, in this section?
Yeah, if we're done with this section, I have comments on, on the findings section, seventeen ninety-four oh six oh.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the first is, is a, is simply structural, there's only one A, so we can eliminate the A, and then change the numbers to letters.
Oh.
And then, the other is, I would like to lead off the introductory statement by saying, in addition to the standard findings for a conditional use permit.
Okay.
And, uh, then we need to say, the following findings must be made with regard to the proposed use, because we say it later on, and we don't ever say what it is.
Uh.
So, those are the structural things, and then, uh, as I alluded to earlier, I have an issue with the sixth finding, the three hundred feet. I, I think this is something that we should, should not be an automatic disqualification, because as we, as we look at these uses, a lot of these uses are potentially problematic, but a lot of them are not, and they're the kind of things where I think if you even had them right across the street from each other, it, it wouldn't give you unction.
Right.
And so, I, I, I would like to say that, um, i- it, basically, we have something that it, it doesn't create an over-concentration, and then that, that we can consider whether it's within three hundred feet, and if that's something council thinks is enforceable. I can, a- and if you all agree, I, I've got language, but if you don't, then.
I agree.
Let's hear, let's hear the language, let's just hear the language that you have.
It shall not result in an over-concentration of similar uses or other uses with potentially similar impacts, period. In making such finding, the reviewing body may consider whether any group home or group living facility, whether or not such facility is licensed, is located within three hundred feet, um, and then measured from the property lines. And that way, I, I think it.
It gives us the ability to look at the radius restriction, but it doesn't hold us to it.
Legally speaking, I like the language, and if, um, the commission likes it, perhaps you can email it to Letitia.
Or hand you the paper.
In ten minutes, I won't be able to read it.
I, I think, um.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree, because I think some of these uses could be quite invisible and innocuous, and, and I think they should be encouraged, because, like I said before, people need a place to live, and I think that, that, and others may be more problematical, and, and it would be worth considering if there's an over-concentration that would affect the, the sort of, um, you know, the, the other members of the community. So, I think that's a good idea. I, I, I had a question about number four on this list, the listens, list of nuisance activities, and one of them is loud noises. Yeah, there's all kinds of loud noises that people make all the time, and I sort of think maybe it needs to be, mm, I don't know, I mean.
Further, like, ongoing.
Excessive noise, something, you know?
Illegal noise, unreasonably loud noise.
Yeah, you know? Unreasonable, something, it just needs to be qualified a little bit, because, you know, you could have a screaming baby, that's a loud noise, and it could annoy any number of people, but, you know, that's not illegal.
Overcompensating, the, uh, the noise would have to be in violation of the city's noise ordinance to.
So, we could just say, you know.
Something that we should even care about.
Yeah, so, n- noise, maybe, you know, noise levels above the city's noise ordinance, or something, but just to qualify that, because I think it's a little bit general to say you can't make a loud noise.
Go yell outside, yeah.
Yeah, you know, you're watching the football game, or you have a neighbor who's, you know, just loud, so, um, yeah.
I just have one question, I'm not sure if it's a, we can combine this, but is there a difference between our legal definition of adverse effects in one and two versus jeopardize and endanger, and could that be more concise?
Where is that?
One and two, I mean, they're, they're affecting the health, welfare, safety, they're affecting the same thing, but resulting adverse effects, which is a little.
Well, you could just combine it with, you know, you could say it shall not result in adverse effects on, or jeopardize or endanger the, and then list those things.
Yeah, I mean, it just seems like it's there, it's so repetitive.
It's a good catch.
Any other comments?
So, then, I thi- I think the next thing is, we need a new section for this, we discussed the ongoing, uh, regulation and.
Operational requirements?
Oper- that's a, that's a, yeah, operate, that's great.
Yeah.
Good word.
And, so what do we want there, we want background checks, safety inspections, and plan?
An emergency.
Emergency plan, and background checks when they hire new people, it's, well, when, you know, when.
When ownership changes.
When ownership changes, or when there's new manager, or whatever, you know?
So, you are going back to the hiring of employees?
Well, I think anytime they, they change a, a manager or an owner.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, because, so, person A could come to you with the application, and they pass the background check, and sell it to person B with more colorful past, and then we've missed it.
Yeah.
So, background checks, um.
Building inspector, annual building inspection.
You know, building inspection, building and fire, correct?
Building and fire.
Business license?
Business license, yeah.
And emergency management plans?
Yeah, so, s- s- so that, uh, yeah, or emerg- an emergency operations plan, you can call it that, that way, I mean, I think the city should be aware of who they're gonna end up, the needs of who they're gonna end up.
Mm-hmm. That makes a lot of sense, actually, in case of an emergency, with the whole crowd of people who are, uh, non-ambulatory, say, it provides a, more of a challenge.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else, any other things we'd like to have on that, the? All right. Well, that's.
I was glad to see the definitions section get rebuilt, and rewritten, I think it was.
It wasn't long overdue.
It was overdue.
A lot of obsolete terms.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. So, is that enough direction on, on this for staff? Any other comments on this?
I just, I, I again wanna thank staff and, and Benson, even though he's not here, I, I mean, this, this is some of the most complicated stuff we've ever dealt with, the way, all the different state and federal laws interplay, and, uh, it's, uh, it's quite an undertaking, and it's also something that we really, really need to undertake, so I, I think it's great that we're, we're getting this.
And i- i- if, if, if the purpose section is rewritten, I would, I, I would be happy to kind of review it before it comes to the, before it comes to the meeting, cause I have strong, as you could hear, I had strong feelings about that, so, okay. I guess that's that on this item, then.
So, do we, do you think we've given enough that we can take this to, um, a public hearing the next time we see it? Or do, do you?
We'd like you to bring it back, so that you can make sure that everything was.
Or do you all feel like you wanna do another?
Another go-round before we have a public hearing?
Before we.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so too.
That never hurts.
Yeah, okay, so you'll bring it back to us at some point, and then after that, we'll have a public hearing on it, so that.
Have we done any outreach to any of these types of uses in town, that, so that they can see what we're doing? Cause I mean, wh- wh- thanks for coming, Barbara, but we, we have gotten very little input from the public, and I, I, I'm just, I, you know, we talk about a lot of this stuff, and a lot of this stuff, I just have no idea how these things actually operate and work, and it would be great to have somebody who has experience running these things come and say, oh, this is great, but you guys forgot X, Y, and Z.
We did get presentation from the, the one facility that received, I thought, excess scrutiny, and, uh, the, what was it, the owner or the manager came, the woman came?
Manager.
Yeah, the manager came and asked that we, um, be careful in our assessment and our judgment. So, but I, one of the reasons I asked, how many, I mean, how, how big is this problem, cause, you know, I've, I, I, we, we all know that CLIME is in town, and, and we're very proud of the fact that this town, you know, protects those people, and it's a perfect place for them, they're very safe here, we know about the British Home, and, you know, the police, places like that, but, uh, you know, every now and then, on the fire department, we would find someone who is taking in people, but, um, I never had a, a, a good sense of where they were on a regular basis, or there was, whether there was any kind of list, so, I, I have no idea how big this challenge is, I mean, it, it could be used, again, the, the code could be put in place tomorrow, or we could wait years before anybody comes in and asks about it.
And how would people?
We can't publicize the discussion.
It would probably be use- useful to have some.
We can put it on UBLAST, Facebook.
Yeah, I, I.
I think that would be useful.
I don't wanna hold anything up, but I, I do feel like, to, to me, this seems like a pretty important thing, and usually, when we do something that's, you know, has pretty big ramifications, we at least get a few people come in and talk, and, and I know it's been mostly over the summer, and people aren't focusing, but it just seems like I, I, you know, the last thing you want is this to get all the way to the city council, and then someone come up to, they say, I never heard about this, well, you know, and, so, I, it's much better to get it now, talk about it, and, and resolve it than at the last minute.
And I think definitely by the time we get to the public hearing, it would be nice to, you know, have some more input from interested parties who could be, you know, people living in these places, people operating them, or families of people who are, who might be living in, in this kind of facility. I think it's really important to, to, uh, in- include it, I think that's a really good point.
Police or fire may know.
Because, you know, like we said, it, they're kind of under the radar, we don't know how many there may be, it's, it would be hard to specifically extend, you know, a, an offer, but the way we do it, oftentimes, when it's a discussion and it affects the city, we, like I said, we can publicize it in UBLAST, we can send those things, and then when it goes to an actual hearing, where, where you would be recommending, we would, um, then a- advertise it in a newspaper, again, in addition to the other venues.
But it'd be nice to sort of, in, in, you know, sort of, worded in the way of inviting comment, inviting comment on it from the public, because we would like to hear some more, and, you know, get, get the in- input of the public in general.
I, I like the idea of having someone tell us if we've missed something.
Yeah.
We're, we are, yeah, I wouldn't be the first, but, but we are, certainly something that none of us have a huge amount of background in, you know, except what we read in the papers, kind of thing.
Yeah, well, personal experience, so.
Can I just make another brief little comment, might help you with some of the, the word is fully included, which is the breakdown of the majority of group homes in California now, and they're really for the development delayed, or people like CLIME, they're only now having maybe two people to an apartment, I might be six, I'm kind of rusty on that, it's usually two to four, because they want them to be included in society, so CLIME really doesn't have any clients any longer, they've, they've been dispersed out into different areas around town or different cities, that's what the state, that's a new requirement from the state, that's about, uh, seven years in the process, um, but the health and safety check is a definite, the fire department, and the first thing when you go into one of these facilities is that they need to approach you with the medical books that are locked up in a file, and give you the background, if you're on the fire department or police department, to show you who it is that you're dealing with, so you get the full medical, full psychological, full whatever. You are allowed to do that in the health and safety check that's done, um, kind of on a rotation basis, could be even done for smoke alarms, or to check to see if the beds are, you know, a certain space from the wall, so, I mean, it's a whole list of laws, but definitely the fire department and the police department are allowed acc. are allowed access to that. That should be the first thing that an owner-operator should be handing to you when you walk in the door. But sober living is so, it's a different, different entity in itself now compared to what else is being done by the state, so...
Yeah, we've talked about that before. All right. And before you go, just make, state your name for the record, because we have to do that, even though we know you.
Barbara Lee Klein.
Thank you. All right, so, thanks for your comments, and I guess we will, unless you have any other questions from us, we will move on to the next item, which is oral commu- oral communication from the audience on an item not on tonight's agenda. All right, any communication from members of the planning commission on issues not on today's agenda or otherwise?
Um, that's just, one thing is that, and I think y'all have noticed already, but we did have our latest round of R1 amendments go up to the city council, and it was approved unanimously, so that was really good news.
Yes, that was good. Um, and communication from staff? Okay, so our next meeting is two weeks, that will be the twentieth? And do we know what's on that agenda at all?
Um, the CUP for one fifty-six West Highland is coming back to you, it was continued to a date certain, so it will be coming back to you.
Ah, okay.
I believe that's the only item so far on the agenda.
All right, thank you very much, then we will adjourn the meeting. Wait a minute.